All right, hearing none, we'll close the work session. And I'll call to order the meeting of the Sandy Springs City Council for Tuesday, September 3, 2024. Will the city clerk please make the announcements and call the roll?
Good evening, mayor and council. First, I would like to remind those in attendance to silence all cell phones and other electronic devices at this time. Individuals who would like to provide a public comment at a city council meeting are required to complete and submit those public comment cards in advance of the meeting. Public comment cards are available at the chamber entrance and online. Those providing public comment may be allotted up to three minutes to speak on their single chosen topic. As I call roll, please inform your attendance. Mayor Rusty Paul.
Present.
Councilmember John Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember Melody Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Mueller.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Rochelle. Councilmember Tibby DeGiulio. Councilmember Andy Baumann.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, have we received any public comment cards?
Yes, we've received one public comment card this evening from Mr. Bill Griffith, who's in house tonight.
Mr. Griffith.
How are you folks doing?
Good.
I think I'm doing all right. From Highway 9, Roberts Drive goes approximately eight tenths of a mile to the Georgia 400 Bridge. Per the community development map, most of that distance is considered protected neighborhood. You may recall that the Roberts Drive side path scoping study, the study, proposes a side path that goes through that protected neighborhood. At the last two council meetings, I discussed several tweaks to that study for your consideration. Three of those tweaks positioned a side path so as to avoid going through that protected neighborhood. Each of those three tweaks may be less costly than the proposal of going through that neighborhood. However, if you're determined to go through that neighborhood, there's another tweak to the study I want to discuss, but it's not as attractive to me as the other tweaks. Most of the existing sidewalks on Roberts Drive are five feet wide with a landscape strip that's two feet wide, which is comparable to most of the sidewalks in the area. For the most part, those sidewalks are completely adequate for bicyclists and pedestrians. How do I know that? Because I've passed bicyclists and pedestrians on those sidewalks while I was a pedestrian with no real problem. This is important. A portion of the proposed side path is eight feet wide with a two-foot-wide landscape strip. However, much of the proposed side path is 12 feet wide with a five-foot-wide landscape strip. That's 17 feet, equivalent to approximately one and a half vehicle traffic lanes. It's also the equivalent of a 17-foot-wide public thoroughfare needlessly infringing on the privacy of residents who live in that protected neighborhood. Since the proposal includes a portion of the side path that's eight feet wide with a two-foot-wide landscape strip, it seems as though those widths should be sufficient for the entire length of the side path. Tweak number five: reduce the width of the entire side path to no more than eight feet with a two-foot-wide landscape strip. That's consistent with the goals stated in the study, and it will save a lot of money. And I'll discuss a final tweak later. By the way, if you haven't received emails from me, I wish you'd check your spam box because I've been sending them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Any further?
No.
All right, we'll close the public comment period. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. DeGiulio.
The approval of the meeting agenda for Tuesday, September 3, 2024.
We have a motion by Mr. DeGiulio. Is there a second?
Second.
Then, a motion by Mr. DeGiulio, seconded by Mr. Paulson, that we approve the meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on agenda item, the meeting agenda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The meeting agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor Paul.
Ms. Rochelle.
I'm made that we approve the consent agenda for Tuesday, September 3.
A motion by Ms. Rochelle. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Rochelle, seconded by Ms. Mueller, that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on approval of the consent agenda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The consent agenda is approved. I think my pages sorted here. All right, moving to new business. Wait a minute.
Yeah, that's right. Public hearing.
All right, yep. Moving to new business, will the clerk please read the first item?
Agenda item 2024-226, consideration of a resolution to approve a contract award to Roadside and Harwell, Inc. for the creation of design guidelines and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract. This presented by senior planner Matthew Onspock.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, as Rocky stated, in May, staff issued a request for proposals for consultation and creation of design guidelines for six commercial and mixed-use districts throughout our city, which hopefully you've seen in the little map, kind of breaks that down. Design guidelines can provide a practical tool for the city to help ensure new development promotes high-quality building form and design while reinforcing the context with the urban and public realm characteristics. And they can also create cohesion within districts and moderate, yet identifiable distinction between them as well. After considerable evaluation and discussion of the proposals and their firms, staff is bringing before you tonight a request for the consideration of a resolution to approve the contract with Roadside and Harwell, RHI, for creation of these design guidelines. And of course, as mentioned, approval of this resolution will authorize city manager to execute the contract.
All right, you've heard the report of the senior planner. What is the desire of council?
Mayor Paul.
Ms. Rochelle.
I move that we approve agenda item 2024-226, a resolution to approve a contract award to Roadside and Harwell, Inc. for the creation of design guidelines and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
We have a motion by Ms. Rochelle. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion by Ms. Rochelle, seconded by Dr. Kelly, that we approve agenda item 2024-226, a contract award to Roadside and Harwell for creation of design guidelines and authorizing city manager to execute the contract. Any discussion? Ms. Rochelle.
Matthew, will we be able to take part in the discussions of the, and how long will this study take?
Yes, certainly. That's a priority baked into it, is there will be opening interviews, if that's what we call them, early on with you all to kind of get your feedback as to what's desired and what you're looking for. And the timeline right now is 16 to 18 months, so it's a pretty thorough process, and we look to get feedback from everyone at all times and through various means, obviously, online and open houses and things like that.
Ms. Mueller.
How do we put together, hold on. How do we put together the stakeholder groups? Because are you going to have stakeholder groups for this? And then how does the city decide on who participates on those?
That's a good question. Some of that, we've got to kind of figure out as the consultant team comes in and works with us. So all those details will probably be ironed out pretty early on as a part of the opening processes for this. Right now, couldn't tell you exactly how that's going to work just because, again, we haven't gotten into those details yet, but that'll be a part of the interviews with you guys and certainly the outreach that we make.
Mr. Paulson.
And of course, that includes public comment from these affected areas.
Absolutely.
I would just ask earlier the better.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Thank you, Matthew. Couple of questions. What will the finished product be? And then, will it result in council action, planning commission review, and then council action?
Yeah, that's right. So there should be a new book that has, these are the guidelines, and please fall within these. And what that all means, again, we'll figure all of that out as we go through the process. There's a lot of different ways to do design guidelines and how enforceable they are and that sort of thing, and whether or not they create need for new development codes to go along with and help support the guidelines. All of that will kind of be figured out as we go.
And where do we already have, is it, do we already have some guidelines in some of the, in the city? We've done this process before, isn't that right?
That, I'm not sure in terms of what we've done before. I know currently we have.
We don't have any design, I mean, we got, Ginger, can you come up and address? Because this is a process, I think, that started as it related to, I thought, the form base code and since we got rid of the design review board about 10 years ago. Could you?
Right, so there are some already baked into the code, as Matt called it. So there are some design guidelines, mostly for commercial districts, and that's really what this is for, is for commercial districts, areas of the city, the different sections of the city. But there are some design guidelines already in there, but these are going to be, some are going to be guidelines and some are going to be required. And it's kind of how do we figure that out as we go through this process? Which ones will be guidelines? Which ones will be mandated by the code?
And so this is all part of a form-based code? I mean, is that an accurate assessment? I mean, the idea is to try to take some of the guesswork out of planning projects, isn't that right?
That's correct.
And also to take some of the negotiation out. This is actually separate from a rezoning. This is.
Correct.
This is to go ahead and pull your permit.
Right, we can guide them and say, these are, this is our wish list. This is what we would love to see these projects look like. Can you show us something that kind of looks like that? And by the way, these are the things that are going to absolutely be required, that you're going to have to do. And so it's going to be that kind of back and forth, which we kind of do now when we have our Thursday meetings. We talk about the different design elements and, well, can't you do something a little different that makes it a little more rich-looking or has a little more glass in it or something like that?
So that sort of segues into maybe my final question. What has been your experience with the guidelines that we have on the books now as it relates to projects that have come through, although there hasn't been a ton of commercial development in the last?
Do you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, I'd like to hear, you know, where we've seen successes and maybe where we can improve, just so when we get it to weigh in and the citizens do, you know, what's been your experience in the last several years with the elements of this that we have in the current codes?
Yeah, currently, right now, what we have, I would consider more of a baseline. We prohibit certain things that the community has determined that they're not a fan of and they don't want to see much of from past experiences and things like that. And so what you see in there now is a baseline, how much color can be, primary colors and things like that, a little bit of finessration, things to do with how much transparency that you have, activation and all of that. So right now, it's a baseline and it's a pretty good one, but this is going to be a lot more about those six districts and what makes them unique and distinct and how to build on that. And if there's not a lot there right now, what does the community want to see it kind of gel into over time?
Let me ask one more thing. Is, in your mind, either of you, is there a goal to, a bias towards flexibility for more development and redevelopment, or is this seen as restrictive or constrictive? Or neutral? I mean, what is the goal here for the city? I mean, I'm personally very concerned about, we have an adopted priority of redevelopment that I think on paper sounds good, but we're not seeing a lot of redevelopment. So, you know, it's how you sort of set the expectations going, and I hope the goal is to end up with, you know, good design, quality design, but that does not overly constrain those that want to invest in the city.
Yeah, I think that currently, anything that's in existence, you know, if they're wanting to make it look really nice and keep it what it is, then that's fine. There are ways to do that, that this may or may not touch. I think this will touch because it'll express to them what this area is trying to become. And so to be a part of that, a lot of developers are interested in kind of fitting into that mold, being a part of something like that. And for any new redevelopments, this just does the same thing, except they're coming in brand-new, and so it's not going to, certainly not going to deter them from wanting to be a part of whatever the project is for that area, especially folks that maybe they're not even from here and they really don't have any idea of what the community wants. Well, what the community wants may be very different in the north end versus what it might be down south of 285. So it's going to help explain those things better to people.
I just want to be sure that we're going through this $300,000 exercise, 280 plus staff time, that we're really cognizant of the goals here. And to Councilwoman Millar's point, I think it's really critical that we get the right stakeholder groups in here, because I do have a lot of concern about unintended consequences and then the drip, drip, drip of the development code as we, you know, the hand of government on this. We have to be really guarded that we intend that this process is to both get quality, good design, but also not to unnecessarily constrain the redevelopment that the city needs.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else for Ms. Mueller? All right, go ahead.
Just one, so I know when people do redevelopment, often some of their actions trigger other things now that are needed. I don't know, more parking or, I don't know, something else. Do you foresee that happening when they come in to, when people come in to do redevelopment, that it will then trigger now they have to go and upgrade their facade or, I don't know, or whatever, these design standards? Or will these always be separate? Or we don't know the answer to this yet?
A little bit of we don't know, but at the same time, there will be a difference between what comes out of this in terms of what's required versus what's suggested. So as the consultant would probably tell us, there's a lot of ways to do this, and so we'll be very cognizant of what Mr. Baumann and you guys have kind of mentioned tonight.
Well, to play off Mr. Baumann, his comments, which I think we're all very concerned about, we've had a number of conversations, and this is not so much in the commercial districts as it is in the residential, but the city manager and I have had conversations about the need to take a look at our code to try and figure out simple projects, you know, to minimize the amount of perceived bureaucracy that some of our contractors and homeowners have felt, and may be the same way in some of the commercial areas. The permitting process is grounded in consumer protection. In other words, you come get a permit, you submit your plans, we look at them and make sure that they are adequate for the protection of the consumer, and then we have inspectors to go out and make sure that those plans are implemented. That was the genesis of the permitting process, to make sure there wasn't any shoddy construction going on. And there was a period in our, not in Sandy Springs history, but in the United States history, where that was an issue. And it may still be some in here and elsewhere. So that's really the whole purpose of the permitting process, is to ensure the quality of construction that the consumer is getting. And so we want to make sure that that continues, but at the same time, that we don't appear to be, or in fact become, overly burdensome to the people who are trying to get this. So there's balancing act through all of this that we're trying to achieve. And, you know, it's an issue that you struggle with, because we've had that conversation, we struggle with. The good news is, is if we get it wrong, we meet every two weeks and can begin to fix it. So, but the main thing is, is we've got a lot of pressure from the Georgia General Assembly, particularly when you start discussing design guidelines, more residential than commercial, because they perceive that that adds to the cost of housing. And there's a lot of pushback that we get at the General Assembly. So as we go through this process, let's be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we want to try and figure out how, particularly on simple projects. If you're building a 50-story building, which hopefully we never have to deal with around here, but if we ever did, you want to make sure that it was done right. We had a conversation at dinner about the Sears Tower and some engineers who saw some things being done wrong, and they went in and, thanks to Mr. Paulson, they fixed it. But anyway, that's just kind of, as we go through this, keep in mind that we are on a fulcrum, and we want to kind of keep it level. Any others? Dr. Kelly.
Almost to the point, I felt like I heard you mentioning, mayor. Are multifamily developments included generally in these type of guidelines?
Yeah, certainly, just with the fact that, to their point, none of this concerns the more low-density residential neighborhoods. This is more about the corridors and nodes and districts throughout the community.
Okay. And there is, in terms of the timeline, I guess there's going to be some overlap between this exercise and the next 10 comprehensive planning piece. So will they operate completely separately, especially in terms of the stakeholder group piece?
Well, the newer next 10 will begin after this effectively, and even then, even when it does start up, it starts very slowly. It's very preliminary.
Okay, so there will be enough space.
Not quite, but, you know, certain considerations obviously should be made throughout this process to coalesce with the next 10 update or the newer version.
Okay, thanks.
Any others? All right, hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on agenda item 2024-226, a resolution approving a contract award to Roadside and Harwell for the creation of design guidelines and authorizing city manager to execute the contract. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The item is approved. The clerk will please read the next item.
Agenda number 2024-227, this is consideration to approve a contract award to Blunt Construction Company, Inc. to construct the 4787 Riverview Road Drainage Improvement Project and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract, presented by Public Works Director Marty Martin.
Mr. Martin.
Mayor and council, in 2022, the city engaged an engineering firm to develop plans to correct deficiencies in the stormwater system under the roadway near 4787 Riverview Road. The project involves replacement of deficient drainage system, rehabilitation of a corrugated metal pipe culvert underneath the shoulder of the road there that ultimately carries stormwater from private properties in the city to the Chattahoochee River National Recreation Area, National Park Service. The project will upgrade the drainage system to city standards. Project scope consists of spin casting some 132 linear feet of 36-inch corrugated metal pipe, replacing 39 linear feet of 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe, replacement of two precast concrete catch basins, installing riprap outlet protection, and installing a new head wall. Section of the project will also be required to obtain a National Park Service special use permit for the work required of the contractor. To advance that work, the city issued an invitation to bid on July 10, 2024, seeking bids from qualified contractors. As a part of that bid competition, the city announced and held a mandatory pre-bid site visit meeting. Two bidders attended that meeting. However, when the city received bids on August 13, 2024, three bids were received. The bid from SCA Construction Incorporated, the bidder not attending the mandatory pre-bid site visit meeting, was deemed non-responsive because of their lack of attendance at the pre-bid site visit meeting. Now, I would add to you that mandatory pre-bid site visit meetings are not the norm. We advertise them, in this case, it was advertised on bonfire, the outlet that our bidders can view the bid and view the bidding requirement. In this case, the mandatory pre-bid site visit meeting was required because of the uniqueness and the challenges associated with the site. Staff felt it important, in this case, our stormwater staff, that it was important that site, that the bidding contractors view the site with staff available to answer any questions about the complexities and uniqueness of the site prior to being able to submit a qualified bid. As you've lived through with a couple of projects where we had contractors not fully understand the dynamics and the complexities of a bid beforehand, we can end up in a protracted situation with contractors where we did not want to let that happen, in this case, because of the uniqueness of the site. Therefore, they held to that stand on mandatory pre-bid. So with that, I then cite the bid results, SCA Construction, a non-responsive bidder at $151,956. Blunt Construction Company, a responsive and responsible bidder, in this case deemed so, $301,751, and Vertical Earth Incorporated at $363,000. Upon review of the bids, city recommends that this award be made to Blunt Construction in the amount of $301,751.06, and that compares relatively favorably with the $250,000 estimate provided by the engineer in advance of this construction bidding. With that, staff recommends award to Blunt.
You've heard the report of the Public Works Director. What's the desire of council?
Mayor Paul.
Mr. Baumann.
I move adoption of agenda item 2024-227, consideration to approve contract to Blunt Construction for the 4787 Riverview Road Drainage Improvement Project.
Have a motion by Mr. Baumann. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Baumann, seconded by Ms. Mueller, that we approve agenda item 2024-227, a contract award to Blunt Construction for the 4787 Riverview Road Drainage Improvement Project. Any discussion?
Mayor Paul.
Mr. Baumann.
Just to touch on your last comment, how is this relatively favorable, $300,000 versus the estimate? I'm not, since you brought it up, Marty, I mean, are we seeing that if you're within 20% over, that's pretty good these days?
In this case, the engineer's estimate was just that, somebody not in the business every day of doing this work.
Okay.
And a significant part of this work that the engineer gave us a line at him, that's where the contractors showed that level of difficulty, was in what was termed mobilization cost, in this case. There's some 50-foot difference between roadway grade and some of the stormwater work that has to happen on permanent drainage easement here. And so that staging, mobilization, ability to access the site was key to the cost here. And so the engineer, in this case, estimated a level of cost associated with that. In this case, we believe our contractors that bid this properly wouldn't got better numbers as a part of that.
Mr. DeGiulio.
Marty, have we used SCA Construction in the past?
We have, and successfully so. So in this case, it was just a matter of, we weren't certain that they understood the complexities and the challenges of this particular site. They've done other work for us, and they've done it successfully.
So if they've done good work for us, was there any attempt made? Because, I mean, their bid is 50% less.
Right.
$150,000, I mean, it's a lot of money.
In this case.
Did we try to remediate this situation with them?
We, councilman, in this case, we required a mandatory pre-bid at site visit attendance. They didn't attend the meeting.
Is that the only reason they didn't get the bid?
That's the reason they didn't get the bid. Yes, and it appears at $150,000, they probably, without diving too much into numbers, they probably didn't grasp the full complexity of the project and the challenges associated with it. There is a significant, what we tried to avoid in this case was bidder looking only at paper, trying to make an assessment of the challenges and cost of the project without a detailed site visit with the explanation from staff.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, mayor. So Marty, you said this 36-inch diameter is going to get spin cast as part of the pre-bid.
Right.
Did we have a spin cast contractor actually come to the site? And have we shot a camera down this thing to see what it looks like?
We have looked, and part of the challenge, some of the cost challenge here is the spin casting, the staging is so difficult for that work because it's remote and down the slope.
Well, it's a small diameter. 36 inches is pretty small to get into.
Right, so in this case, probably crane work is going to be required to access and get spin cast gear down there, so.
Was there a spin cast contractor that actually saw this?
Not, they weren't required to do that as a part of the mandatory site visit, only the prime, getting the team on board, which required to do that.
Did they call out the spin cast contractor as a sub?
I don't know that as I sit in front of you tonight, so I could get that back to you.
Sometimes these, especially small diameter, spin cast, it's just, spin cast is just the lining of a pipe you spray with concrete this thin, okay, or grout. But depending on the condition of that pipe and the contractor's knowledge, a contract can get lost in a hurry with a small project of, what, 1,200 feet long? Is that what you said?
In this case, for the spin cast work, let's see, I've got the number right here, 132 feet.
Okay, I thought you said 1,200.
All right.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right.
They spray concrete on the inside of the pipe?
So if it's corrugated metal pipe, they deteriorate over time, corrosion will take the better of them. So in this case, a concrete liner is sprayed inside that corrugated metal pipe to effectively create a smaller but intact ring inside the corrugated metal pipe, and it preserves the, you don't have to dig it up, you don't have to suffer all of those costs along the way to. costs along the way to keep the pipe up to standard and keep the water moving through.
So if the corrugated pipe degrades, you've got that concrete liner left, is that the point?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on Agenda Item 2024-227, approving a contract award to Blunt Construction to construct 4787 Riverview Road Drainage Project Improvement Project, authorizing city manager to execute the contract. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The item is approved. The clerk will please read the next item.
Agenda Item Number 2024-228, this is consideration to approve a light, excuse me, a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power Company to install pedestrian-scale lighting for the Morgan Falls Streetscape Project, that's project number T2404, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. This is presented by Public Works Director Marty Martin.
Mr. Martin.
Mayor and Council, I present to you tonight a proposed lighting agreement in the amount of $703,750 for the installation of pedestrian-scale lighting on Morgan Falls Road in association with the FY24 budgeted project to do the same, light, provide pedestrian lighting on Morgan Falls Road from Roswell Road to the park. As a part of developing this pedestrian-scale lighting agreement here, the Georgia Power Company faced some challenges and constraints from none other than Georgia Power Company in the furtherance of installing pedestrian lighting. My feeble attempt at humor, and I said, thank you for the chuckle there, so.
No, but it was good. That was good, Marty.
All right, so in this case, as you're aware, if you've driven that road, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it, so.
Not as good as me, but go ahead.
I got it, so I'm taking notes, Mayor, keeping, any, so significant transmission line along Morgan Falls Road, some may say that's, the transmission line might be the reason they built the road in the first place, but that transmission line provides constraints in terms of what other structures can be installed relative to those transmission lines. There are a couple of areas throughout the length of Morgan Falls Road down to the park that the transmission lines did not allow the installation of what I'd call our standard pedestrian-scale street lighting. You'll see either the Shepherd's Crook or the single-post streetlights there. And in those cases, and we're talking about eight lights here, eight lights there, Georgia Power Company came up with alternatives within that same manufacturer's vocabulary of the lighting style we have used with all of our other pedestrian-scale street lighting installations to complete the lighting and complete an adequate lighting along the length of the project. And in this case, in some cases, they used double lamp on single-post lights to provide adequate illumination. Other places, they're proposing some, I believe it is, let me get it right, nine Bollard lights in an area where you can't have a structure too close to the transmission lines as well. They are augmenting on existing wood pole streetlights, in some cases, additional illumination on those streetlights in order to provide adequate illumination. So that's where this project differs somewhat from most pedestrian lighting project installations vis-à-vis what we just completed last year with Johnson Ferry Abernathy Lighting. One other inclusion in this project as a part of the agreement here is Georgia Power has the ability to separate switching and controls for the lights along the portion of the roadway for, associated with the lantern parade. So with that, project T2404 has adequate funds to fund this agreement, and the price proposed by Georgia Power is $703,750 with a follow-on monthly lease cost, after all lights are installed, of $2,642.13.
You've heard the report of the Public Works Director. What's the desire of council?
Mayor Paul.
Dr. Kelly.
I move approval of Agenda Item 2024-228, approval of a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power to install pedestrian-scale lighting for the Morgan Falls Streetscape Project.
A motion by Dr. Kelly, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Paulson, that we approve Agenda Item 2024-228, a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power to install pedestrian-scale lighting for the Morgan Falls Streetscape Project. Any discussion? Mr. DeGiulio.
Marty, that's $700,000 and $2,400 a month lease payment. What's the duration of the lease? Is it in perpetuity, or is it?
So the $700,000 is obviously a one-time cost for the installation.
Installation, right.
Yes, sir. So that comes out of the FY24-funded street lighting project. And then from there, we have a city lighting account that gets updated, as you can tell, periodically as we add lights to the lights that the city provides power to throughout the city. So that recurring lighting account, annual budget item, is where the $2,400 per month will land. And it is a cost for the duration that the lights are installed out there.
Yeah, but what's the duration of the lights? I mean, do these lights?
In perpetuity, yes, sir.
They're in perpetuity?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That rate is established by Georgia Power, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on Agenda Item 2024-228, approving a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power Company to install pedestrian-scale lighting for the Morgan Falls Streetscape Project. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The item is approved. The clerk will please read the next item.
Agenda Item Number 2024-229, this is consideration to authorize a lease purchase agreement for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer Pumper Fire Truck for the Sandy Springs Fire Department and to authorize the city manager to execute all documents related to that transaction. This is presented by Fire Chief Keith Sanders.
Mr. Sanders.
This item came before you August the 6th as a purchase. Previous to that, you had approved in the budget the lease purchase of this product. In addition to that, the chief mentioned it to you in his presentation on August the 6th that it would be a lease. Our trouble broke out when the leasing agency, PNC Bank, wanted their name in the resolution for the purchase, the lease purchase of the truck. So we bring it to you tonight to clarify the fact that this is a lease purchase. The initial payment, which will change because the, as luck would have it, the interest rate has gone down since the original discussions back in July about the lease purchase of the fire truck. So that's why this resolution has a maximum limit of 4.74. We believe it will be somewhere more closely, closer to 4%.
All right, you've heard the report of the city attorney. What's the desire of council? Mr. Paulson.
I move approval of Agenda Item 2024-229, authorize a lease purchase agreement for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer Pumper Fire Truck for the Sandy Springs Fire Department, authorize city manager to execute contracts related to the transaction.
Have a motion by Mr. Paulson, is there a second?
Motion by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Ms. Rochelle, that we approve Agenda Item 2024-229, authorizing a lease purchase agreement for a Pierce Enforcer Pumper Fire Truck for the Sandy Springs Fire Department, authorizing city manager to execute all documents related to the transaction. Any discussion?
Mayor Paul.
Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. A question for you, the dollar amount we approved on August 6th and the dollar amount we're talking about tonight, is the same amount of money, or is it less or more?
The purchase amount is $1,102,700. The, as the lease would be calculated at 4.74%, the initial lease payment, which would be in May of '25, is $499,000. And it'd be three equal payments of that amount, annual payments in arrears at the end of the year.
And then we get the truck in three years?
The truck will be here in, oh, 42 months.
42 months, okay. And that's what we, that same dollar amount we talked about in August?
It is the exact same dollar amount, and because it's a different transaction, I would also add to you, since you voted on this, the, we've negotiated there will be a performance bond, ensuring that the truck will be delivered, even though the money's already been paid. And the money borrowed from PNC Bank would be held in escrow by the manufacturer of the truck until the truck is delivered, accruing interest at the time, and the city gets the credit of the $174,000 for the interest that accrues on the money placed in escrow.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on Agenda Item 2024-229, authorizing a lease purchase agreement for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer Pumper Fire Truck for the Sandy Springs Police Department. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The item is approved. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda reports. I think most of us attended the groundbreaking for North Springs High School, something that I know Ms. Rochelle's worked on for a long time, and a lot of other folks in the community have as well. And I tell you what, when they break ground, they break ground. I mean, place was like, there was dirt everywhere, so it's good, and we're glad that North Spring, which is one of the oldest schools, if not the oldest school in Fulton County, is now being upgraded as it should have been some time ago, but we're thankful to the Board of Education and the leadership of the school board to be able to get this done. We're getting closer to, unfortunately, as the calendar winds down for the year, the Georgia General Assembly will return in January. We've already started getting meetings, looking for the session. I'll be in the next two days with a joint Georgia Municipal Association and Association County Commissioners Legislative Policy Meeting over the next two days, beginning to look at joint opportunities for getting policies that help local government and the General Assembly next year. And so I'm going to be working with them over the next, we've got some things that we would like to see done, and we'll be bringing them up. I'll be bringing those up to the, both to the joint meeting between the counties and the cities, as well as when the cities meet, GMA meets singularly on Thursday, some things that I think we need to take a look at policy-wise. One of the things that we will be talking about as well, as you know, we do an annual hometown connection where we get our legislators in and we talk to them. We'll be trying to set that up prior to the session this year. And so looking forward to, you know, I'm not looking forward to getting the General Assembly in town, but I'm looking forward to be able to start preparing properly to get the kinds of things that we need. If there's anything that any council members would like for GMA or to consider as part of their legislative agenda, please get that to me as soon as possible so that we can talk about it. We'll be also having another meeting to discuss it in January, once the session begins, but this is an opportunity to refine some policies that GMA will be pursuing. So I'll be part of that process over the next few days. Anybody else? All right, staff reports, I know the city manager's going to do the financials in the absence of the chief financial officer, so Ms. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Our chief financial officer is in the midst of final preparations for our FY24 audit, so I am pinch hitting for her tonight. The unaudited financial statements for the period ending June 30, 2024 are included in your packet tonight. Just a few highlights, as of June, we did complete the fiscal year. Our revenues ended at a total of 117.7% above budgeted anticipated revenues, and our expenditures ended at 93.38% of the budget. We did achieve 100% of all core revenues except for motor vehicle taxes, which is shown on page one of the financial packet. The reason for that, as you all may recall, motor vehicle taxes are being phased out as vehicles purchased after 2020, excuse me, after March 2013 are all taxed under TAVT, which you see on the next line down on the first page of the packet. The overall departmental expenditures ended below budget for the year, ranging between 42% of budget to 97% of budget. And as I mentioned, we are currently in progress with our FY24 audit, with the auditors coming on-site later this week to conduct their on-site testing. This concludes the financial report for June 2024, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Paulson? And then Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, thank you, Eden. So when we did budgeting, we assumed X amount of revenue, X amount of expenses. How does the actual line up with what we assumed for this coming year budget?
We budgeted very well. We anticipated less, we anticipated fewer dollars coming in so that we do not end up with the surprise at the end of the fiscal year. So overall, we did perform, I would say, fairly well for '24 based on our budget.
So you don't see a big difference in what we assumed for next year's budget based on what we thought this year was how this was going to end?
No, not at all. And in fact, if you look at the local option sales tax page, which is on page seven of the packet, you'll notice that we collected $35 million, but we only budgeted $26 million. In '25, and you'll.
$29 million.
No, if you look on, we.
I'm looking at this page you got here.
Which page are you looking at, sir?
The one that's on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Annual budget's $29 million.
Yes, that is what we had projected, but we collected $6 million more than that.
That's good.
Mr. Bowman.
Yeah, so that's what I wanted to focus on, lost, for a couple of things. For the coming year, I think there was a lot of concern about lost revenue. There's some concern about property tax, although I think because that's a, I think that's a smaller concern right now. What, do you know what we're seeing for the trends in July and August yet? And, oh yeah, okay, I was going to ask Tony that. It'll be interesting to see because I think we, you guys expressed a lot of concern based on some governor comments and projections, but it looked like the lost revenue finished pretty strong. And if the trend remains, or even if it's flatline, I suspect we're going to be in a very strong position as it relates to the current fiscal year, but.
I would agree, and I'm trying to pull up exactly the amount that we budgeted for FY25, and let me find it here for you. I believe we budgeted $31 million for local option sales tax, that's the number that's sticking in my head right now, and you'll see we were at $35 million for total collections this year. So we've always taken a very conservative approach to budgeting those numbers.
Also, we need to keep in mind that the agreement that we have with Fulton County means that the, our portion of the lost tax on a percentage basis will be declining starting in the current year and going to the end of the 10-year period. Our annual, our annual percentage will decrease over, this is, I think, probably the last year we're getting pretty close to what historically we've gotten. And then going forward, it will decline slightly at first, but we'll, by the end of 10 years, there'll be significant impact on our lost revenues anyway, as more of that goes to Fulton County.
So that I was able to pull up, and our FY23, or excuse me, that is calculated on calendar year, so it's a little bit confusing, but our share was 9.5512% for '23. For '24, it went to 9.4894, and for '25, our share will be 9.389.
So it did, it went down in the fiscal year that we just completed, and the revenues were up by $6 million.
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. We do need an executive session tonight to cover a couple of items, so I'll need a motion to suspend regular order and go into executive session.
Mayor Paul.
Mr. Paulson.
I move that we do just that, suspend regular order and move into executive session for the purposes of real estate and litigation.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulson, is there a second? Been moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. DeGiulio, that we suspend regular order and move into executive session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on suspension of regular order and going to special session, or executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are in executive session. We will simply return after our executive session, conclude, return to regular order, and adjourn, there'll be no further business conducted this evening. Let me get, let me get to the right page, hold on, hold on, hold on. I gotta get on the right page here. Mr. Paulson. Mr. Paulson moves that we end the special session, or the special, executive session and return to regular order. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. DeGiulio, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on returning to regular order. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are in regular order. Mr. DeGiulio moves adjournment, seconded by Mr. Paulson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned at 7:34.